Good afternoon. Thank you all for being here. Today is a voting meeting for the Prescott City Council. It's October 10, 2023. Time is 3 o'clock. I have a couple announcements to share with everyone, so I'll get into those. I don't see... Oh, introduction, forgive me. We do have an audience today. Lois Ferworth, who is a council member-elect. Stand, Lois, so we can applaud and recognize you.
(APPLAUSE).
This is part of the hazing ritual that council member elects experience every time they come to council meetings. First off, for announcements, we ask the citizens to come help the city celebrate the grand opening of the Granite Creek Corridor next Tuesday, October 17, at 10:00 a.m. The address is 232 North Granite Street, near Sam Hill Warehouse banquet facility. We will park there and then take a short walk to the trail for the ceremony. Also, Tuesday, October 17, coming up, I will be at Yad by College, providing a brief presentation on the city, followed up with Q and A about important city topics. I'd love to see you there. The address for that is 1100 East Sheldon Street. Follow the signs to Building 19. And with that, we will go to an invocation from Pastor Paul Clemens with Cavalry Chapel of Prescott. All right. I guess we will pinch hit here. Steve, would you do an invocation for everyone? I think you're up to it. Come on, Steve. Be a sport.
We could just do a moment of silence if you'd like to do that, Mayor Protem.
What's that? Sure. I guess we'll do a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now have Councilmember Rusing lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, will you do roll call?
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Kentelme.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Mayor Good, Councilman Moore, and Councilman Tenney are excused from the meeting.
Thank you. We now have our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And today we have Todd Seadow here. He's the owner of Epic Rides to present on the annual update of the Whiskey Offroad.
Good afternoon, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, everyone. As Katie mentioned, my name is Todd Seadow. I'm the president and founder of Epic Rides. We produce the annual Whiskey Offroad. And I'm here to report on the performance of the event this year. And first, I'm going to breeze through the backstory, just to give everyone context. The event was founded in 2004. It's been aligned with the city's Economic Development Office since its inception. In 2007, we got serious about the event after a few years of watching it get some traction in the community. And we began catapulting it forward with four main pillars in mind: to promote Prescott as a mountain bike destination, to drive commerce in downtown, to drive tourism, and to enhance the quality of life for Prescottonians. Fast forward to 2023, and we had one of the greatest whiskey offroads on record. In addition to nice weather, which always helps an outdoor event, no wind, nice and cool outside, we had a bumper crop of attendance, and we had a really helpful tailwind from the Arizona Office of Tourism, which we collaborated with the City of Prescott's Economic Development and Tourism Office to secure. The event raised over $74,000 for community organizations. So, let's see here. Where do I point it?
No pointer.
But how do I get it to scroll?
So it's not working.
Oh. All right. Come. Let's see here. Getting stuck in the fold. Oof. That's going to be a little too small.
Because it's a PDF.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next time, PowerPoint. Okay. Okay. So I'm going to go through the high points of all these numbers. If you have questions, please don't hesitate, okay? Otherwise, I'm not a big fan of just reading what it says to everybody. So the event had over 2,000 registered, and over 2,000 registered equals just shy of 1,725 on the start line on event weekend. And about 5,800 total bike event-specific attendees. And I say bike event-specific because there's also a massive concert that happens as well that weekend in association with the event that we produce, and that's an additional 5,000 people. We had 41% year-on-year retention. 41%, having now produced mountain bike events for 25 years. 41% is an extraordinary healthy mountain bike event. It allows for new blood to come in with the other 59%, and it shows that there's a very loyal audience that's returning year after year. Our total registration, you'll see, was down just a bit from the year prior, and that matches national trends in tourism. And it's a small number, so it's nothing alarming to us. The origin of attendee, speaking to the pillar on tourism and commerce, 88% of our mountain bike-specific attendees are not from Prescott. So it's a vehicle to bring new people to your community year after year, and to show them your natural resources, and present to them your commerce opportunities. 41% of them aren't even from Arizona. You can see our top five states and top five cities. California, Colorado are the second and third most-present states, represented states, Utah, Nevada. So touch states is kind of the theme there. We have a tremendous amount of presence from throughout the country, but California and Colorado represent the second and third largest attendees outside of Arizona. Interestingly, our Tucson event that's in February, which is comparable size, it's flip-flopped. Our second-most well-represented state is Colorado, and third is California. So we think it has something to do with time of year. February, Colorado, want to get out of the snow. April, California, want to test their fitness. Visitor statistics. Where are we on this tiny thing? Let's see if I can scroll successfully. Yeah, okay. So visitor statistics. By design, the event is intended to drive heads in beds. We brought in... The visitors ended up with an average of 2.7 nights staying in town from out of town, and 3.3 people in their party. Both are above average for a cycling event. Important takeaways: over 90%, 94% stayed one or more nights in Prescott, in your hotels and Airbnbs and so forth. 18% stayed four or more nights. So what we're seeing with now a decade or so of mountain biking in middle schools and high schools, which Prescott has really strong presence in statewide, is that the whiskey offroad's turned into a family vacation. So instead of a guys' trip, it's a family trip. And families show up as a spring break or an extended weekend and stay, you know, three, four, five, six nights. In addition to that, with our pro category and our industry expo, the pro athletes and the industry people show up, you know, a week ahead of time, five days ahead of time, to get comfortable with the course, because there's a lot riding on the line for them. And the industry people show up because they're traveling from the previous weekend's event to this one. So just to be on their calendar is nice, but what that turns into is really meaningful financial impact for the community. 67% stayed in hotels and Airbnb-type properties. 18% stayed with family or friends. Admittedly, that's a little higher than I would like. I'd like them to be in hotels. And 6% didn't stay at all. We think that's okay. We've designed the event that requires everyone to be here for one night at least. We need to give a little bit for those, you know, the anomalies, right? The person that experiences life and can't make it on Friday but is going to be there Saturday to do their ride. We still want them to have a good experience, even though life got in the way, because remember, 41% retention, right? So we want to make people's weekends. We don't want to turn away just because they couldn't abide by the exact structure of the event. So that's probably what a lot of that 6% represents. Destination travel? Let's see. Oh, too far. Are you able to scroll on your screen? No? Okay. All right. What just happened?
The IT is on.
I had it, and then it went away. Okay, right there. So 18% of the event had never been to Prescott before. We're introducing new people to your community. The ad age is that word of mouth is the absolute best marketing. I think even in the world of social media and everything else, it still holds true. And to bring in 18% of the event that's never been here before, that's a really strong group of people to introduce to your community and send them away with a positive experience. 35% pre-ride the course. So we promote heavily riding the course in advance, so that people are familiar with the trails, and they have a good experience, they have a safer experience, and they have the most successful experience they can getting to the finish line. It is not an easy task. 35% pre-ride, from out of town. 35% from out of town pre-ride. That means that's an additional visit. So we don't capture that in our economic impact estimates, but we know that there is more money there. There are more visits to your community. Even if it's a day trip for someone from Phoenix, or Tucson, or Sedona, that's half a tank of gas. A burger after the ride, a beer after the ride, whatever it might be, is meaningful. 68% said they'd return during the next year. So the event is in the end of April. That was strategic. We want people to come here just as it heats up in the valley, to get comfortable, have a good experience, so that as it becomes unbearable in the valley, this is their go-to, familiar getaway. And it works. 53% would not have come to Prescott this year if not for the whiskey offroad. That's strong. It's keeping you on their radar, and that's important to us. Per participant spend, across the board, everything is up. I think in simple terms, it's matching our economy. Everything costs a little bit more. The meaningful thing that I see in there is that the biggest winner, the biggest margin, is accommodations, and that's bed tax dollars. That's the biggest pull off of this event for the city and the tax base. So what's this thing worth? This year, 2023, bike event attendees only, not factoring in the concert, not factoring in pre-rides. This is just the week of the event, the direct impact. We're estimating $3.2 million, with the visitors to the community representing 2.9 million and a very small amount represented by the residents at 215,000. That is inclusive of the donations we make from the event, too, though. And I do want to point out, you guys termed out on a 3/4 of a percent tax after 2022, and even then, we still managed to grow with a smaller amount of tax to go against the economic impact. So that's a little victory, I think. So something else that we don't measure, but we know it's important, is the marketing value of the event. And so, let me see if I can... Yeah, okay. That's a picture of the concert. Again, remember, we had this wonderful tailwind from the Arizona Office of Tourism, brought in Green Sky Bluegrass, which is a bluegrass band at the top of the game. We had over 5,000 tickets distributed for it, and threw a heck of a party. In addition to that party, the marketing highlights, these are things that they end up being... First of all, the event has tremendous amounts of tentacles, because you got a couple thousand people that go out and have a meaningful accomplishment. They ride 15, 30, 50 miles, and that's a life achievement for them. It's a bucket list thing, right? It hits the bucket list column for a lot of them. You know, for those that return year after year, and it's less of a bucket list, it's more of a reaffirming that they're living their life correctly, that they're staying fit, that they're getting out of their comfort zone, that they're doing hard things and knowing in life that they can do that. And that means a tremendous amount to all of us when we have those opportunities. So then, tack on the marketing. Everyone has a smartphone in their hand. Everyone is posting and tagging their day-to-day and their accomplishments. So the amount of posts that go out are tremendous. We survey for it. I don't have the number on me. Actually, is it above that? I don't think I can get there. But a few of the evergreen pieces that came from this last event in April, we brought in an influencer that goes by Outside Brendan. He put up a post that paid homage to Whiskey Row. He had like a, you know, for the snow skiers, it's a shot ski, and he did a bike ski. So he put a shot on a handlebar, and you had to bring the handlebar of the bike back, and then it, you know, poured a shot in your mouth. When I submitted this document for the agenda, it was already at 370,000 accounts reached. And I looked this morning before I came, it's over 400,000 already. So that was like three weeks ago. The guy is just viral with everything he does, and that's a well-performing post for him, but it's just going to keep going. It's this thing. It's evergreen at this point. And it says, Prescott, Arizona. It's on your square. It celebrates Whiskey Row. It couldn't be more, just, you know, on message. And then we brought in Global Mountain Bike Network with support from your tourism office. And they have a 2 million-person audience. It's on YouTube. There's no fluff. It's a YouTube-based, you know, traffic counter, per se. They did a video about the event that is easily reaching the global mountain bike audience, as their name would suggest. And it's already over 50,000 views, and that's just in the four months it's been up. And then, of course, they did some social media around it, too, and that's racked up almost 50,000 views. These are just nuggets. There's a lot. You know, the male pro that won, Keegan Swenson, he just went and got fifth place at a world championship race on Saturday, Sunday, excuse me. Everything he does goes viral now. This is his favorite event. Talks about it all the time. Coincidentally, his girlfriend won the women's pro category. Sophia, same thing. We have a post up with her that's north of 25,000 views already and going still. So the content that comes from this event each weekend, that reaffirms the event, its relevance to the mountain bike community, and the worthiness of the mountain biking in Prescott for anyone that wants to go riding, continues to do work year-round. With that, I'd like to say thank you. The City of Prescott is a major partner in the event, has been since day one, and it wouldn't be possible for us to produce this event without your support. And it feels like such a great equitable relationship. We're proud to keep this thing at the forefront of mountain biking and in the cycling space, one of the most reputable cycling events in the country, with a national, international Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Questions? Comments?
Hi, Todd. I have a question. First of all, I'd like to thank you for supporting our community. And also, how many of these events do you put on a year, and what are the locations?
So, the simple answer is three. Today, Epic Rides produces three events in Arizona. Our original event is called the 24 Hours in the Old Pueblo. It's in Tucson. It takes 2,000 registrations, and it fills up in about an hour to two every October 1st. And then we have the whiskey offroad here in April, similar size, 2,000, maybe a little more sometimes. And then the Tour of the White Mountains, which is in Pine Top Lakeside, happens each October. It was just last Saturday. Prior to the pandemic, we had three other events in Nevada, Carson City, Nevada, the Tahoe area, another one in Grand Junction, Colorado, and then we were in Bentonville, Arkansas, and due to announce a new event in the Midwest as well in March of 2020. We haven't flexed back up to that yet. It's still a question mark if we ever will, but right now, being a nimble, small event producer in Arizona seems like the right thing to do, based on the kind of topsy-turvy status of the cycling industry.
Thank you.
Anyone else over there? Well, Todd, I'll say thank you on behalf of the City of Prescott for this event. It's certainly something that I've watched over time grow and become bigger and bigger. It's a big draw for tourism, and I think everything you highlighted is right on. It really showcases the best of Prescott and brings a distinct visitor to Prescott and kind of lets them know about what a great, best-kept-secret Prescott is. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right. We will go to proclamations. The first proclamation we have is for Colonial Heritage Month from Councilman Sishka.
Well, folks, I can't imagine you not imagining who is here from the organization.[1309.13][1309.13](LAUGHING). So please, ladies, come up and stand on either side or wherever. Now, this is a proclamation for Colonial Heritage Month for October 2023. Whereas, and there's only four whereas's this time, whereas the Jane George chapter of the National Society Colonial Dames XVII, and for those of you who live in Rio Linda, that is 17, Century of Prescott, Arizona is locally sponsoring National Colonial Heritage Month during the month of October 2023. And whereas, National Colonial Heritage Month brings to mind the first courageous settlers who arrived in America and who determined the direction for the formation of our country. And whereas, the members of this society, by virtue of their lineal descent from those early arrivals, feel an obligation to work for the preservation of the priceless legacy that these early arrivals left to all American citizens. And whereas, they continue to convey the true meaning of the inheritance by reminding us that our privilege to live in a free country has stemmed from loving our country, obeying its laws, respecting its flag, and defending it against all enemies. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, and on behalf of the City Council, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Colonial Heritage Month, and encourages all citizens of the City of Prescott to observe this month as a means of reinforcing the priceless legacy that we inherit with our citizenship, in order to help preserve our rich culture and heritage with deep respect for the principles upon which our great country was founded. And who would like to accept the official form of this?
That's her.
Ma'am?
Thank you very much.
And would you please say a few words?
Lee, I'll hold it for you if you want to. Our chapter, the Jane George chapter of our society, started in 2006, and Mary Ellen Crispell is a member. I am the chapter president and have been about four different times. What we do, our focus of what we do in this community is for our veterans. We are heavily, heavily involved. Right now, we're doing a clothing drive, because they have asked for clothes for the veterans, and we just continue to do everything we can toward education for our youth and to make them realize the benefits and importance of living in this free nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to stand here for a picture?
Oh, a photo op?
Come this way.
There you go, Ms. Lee. Can you hold it, too? Thank you so much.
All right, ready? Thank you, and congratulations.
Have a wonderful afternoon and a great evening.
Next, we'll have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week from Councilmember Rusing.
Good afternoon. We have Chief Holder joining us, and Deputy Chief Thomas Knapp, and...
Scott.
Scott.
And Conrad.
And Conrad, yes. And also, I would like to invite our representatives from the U.S. Forest Service. They're here for another agenda item, but I would, since it's Fire Prevention Week... Thank you. Whereas, the City of Prescott, Arizona is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Prescott, and fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, with homes being the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, fire prevention is a crucial part of our community risk reduction, which ensures that the fire service is committed to a comprehensive strategy to address hazards in the community. Whereas, Fire Prevention Week is celebrated throughout North America every October and is the oldest public health observance on record in the U.S., entering its 101st year. Whereas, cooking is the leading cause of home fires and fire injuries, with nearly half, 49%, of all home fires involving cooking equipment. Whereas, the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, aims to educate the public about simple but important steps they can take to help reduce the risk of fire when cooking at home. Whereas, citizens are encouraged to be an active part of fire prevention by ensuring their property is prepared for wildfires. And now, everyone join me, remember, only you can prevent forest fires. Whereas, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors provide early warning of fire and dangerous gas presence in the home. Whereas, Prescott's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fire and home fire injuries throughout prevention and protection, education. And whereas, having these functional detectors with audible and visible alarms in every home has proven to save lives and for the deaf and hard of hearing, along with information about carbon monoxide alarms. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim August... Excuse me, October 8th through the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and urges all who reside to install and test their smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, excuse me, carbon dioxide detectors, monthly, and to change batteries at least once a year, and to practice their home and workplace evacuation plans, and to participate in the public safety activities offered by the City of Prescott Fire and Emergency Services throughout Fire Prevention Week. I'm presenting this to our chief, and I expect a few words.
All right. Yeah, so it is the oldest public health celebration, and it actually has its origins in the Great Chicago Fire. So the first year that the Fire Prevention Week was celebrated was in 1922. In 1925, President Coolidge made it an official national event. And it's interesting, because really, fire prevention is a little bit limited these days, because fire departments have really expanded their scope far beyond just fire prevention. We're really into community risk management. It's very important to us that our partners from the Forest Service are here. We have our new wildfire risk manager as well. And so this goes far beyond just fire codes and fire prevention, fall prevention, for instance, all the other things that the fire department is now responsible for. The other thing is because it is a retroactive or reflective event as well with the Great Chicago Fires... Chicago Fire, is a tragedy in its past, I think it's also time for the fire service to lean forward to prevent that next major catastrophe and not necessarily build our Fire Prevention Week on a tragedy, but actually on the tragedies that we can prevent in the future. So really appreciate the council supporting us, and this is a great honor. Thank you.
We'll move on to open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the open call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic, and topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do not have any comment cards at this time.
All right. We'll move right along to the consent agenda. Anyone have anything to pull from the consent agenda? Do you want to pull anything from the consent agenda down over there? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 9A through 9D. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilwoman can tell me. Passes 4-0.
Okay. That is the consent agenda. We'll move on to Item 10, the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Today's item is approval of a contract for a participating agreement with the U.S. Department, the Forest Service, and the Prescott National Forest. I have Director Baines here to discuss this item, and I just really want to reiterate that partners like this are what have allowed us to build a number of our trailheads, a number of our important connections, and this participation agreement is similar to some of those that we've had in the past. So I'll let Director Baines go through it.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor Protem, council, members of the public, Joe Baines, Recreation Services Director. As Katie pointed out, this partnership's been going on for quite some time. We've been working with Prescott National Forest on the Greater Prescott Trail Planning for at least 12 years, I think, with a lot of public involvement, and it's really produced a lot of good results for citizens of the community as well as our visitors. So this is a five-year agreement, and it builds on a previous agreement that we had that has expired. And essentially, a big part of it is it allows us to work on Prescott National Forest property with our equipment and volunteers, and allows them to do the same. A couple examples of how this has been done in the past is the Badger Trail, which is now part of the Circle Trail. It intersected both Forest Service boundaries as well as the City of Prescott boundaries, and we just shared resources to build that. Another example is Spence Basin Trailhead, which we built grassroots participation from Jason here in the crowd, and as well as myself and Chris and some other folks, a lot of volunteers. And the Spence Basin Trails, which are very popular. In fact, Todd Seadow here today was just telling me that he went and visited those on his trip here. So very well attended, very well used. A big difference, or a big part of this agreement that's maybe different than the one we did a few years ago, is that this one includes the building of a trailhead off of White Spa Road. This trailhead is in a much-needed area. It's a strategic location as it intersects with the Prescott Circle Trail. It also connects in close proximity to the Bean Peaks Flow Trails, which are currently under construction on Prescott National Forest, which will add about 17 miles of trail in that area. So this is unique, and the U.S. Forest Service will be funding that. The City of Prescott would cause the construction of that through a contracting process, and then the feds would then pay for that project. So really, it's just us being a little more nimble and being able to get things done and building this trailhead that'll benefit everybody, including the National Forest. Another component of this agreement is a noncash in-kind contribution of $186,250. That'll be accomplished essentially through project management, sharing of volunteers, sharing of equipment. This is similar to what we've done in the past, so it's a noncash contribution that'll effectively come from operating budgets that will really just be people, not materials. As Katie pointed out, I can't speak strongly enough about how these partnerships allow us to build infrastructure that benefit our community and our visitors. We couldn't do what we do without Prescott National Forest. We have a very close and unique relationship. This isn't something that's done all over the United States. It's not singular, but it's not done very often, and we get a lot of good work done with this process and this partnership. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I also have Sarah Colosson, the Prescott National Forest District Ranger, as well as Jason Williams, the Trails and Wilderness Manager for the Prescott National Forest here as well.
Questions? Comments? Raise your hands. Kathy?
Thank you, Joe. I'm really excited about this. I support passive recreational uses in our forest, and this will be an opportunity to have more varied recreational opportunities, and will bring in ecotourism, and we have a very robust trail system and open space in our city. But I think this will be a wonderful, a wonderful extension of our recreational services. So I want to thank everyone.
Thank you. Connie?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Brandon? Joe, I think this is a great idea also. But is the idea, will this also help in curbing some of the, I don't know what we want to call them, kind of the wildcat trails that people are just sort of making? Is the hope that this will centralize them and keep them on the trail?
Actually, that's a great question. Thank you for that. Councilwoman can tell me. That's a big part of it, is really watershed improvement by getting rid of some of these nonauthorized trails. And so through the Prescott, the Greater Prescott Trail Planning Process, that's been a big integral part of how these trails have moved forward. Get these trails, you know, to where they're recognized, where they're authorized in cutting back and in obliterating some of those trails that have been built up, fall lines that cause erosion control issues as well as other issues. So yes, it's a big part, and that's a great question. Thank you for that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Well, do we have any comments from the public?
We do.
Thank you. You need what? You need my address? No, you've got it. Okay. My voice is a little hoarse. It's been that way ever since I yelled in excitement when I heard about this proposed agreement. I'm Rod Moyer, and I'm one of the founding members of Save the Dells as a political action committee. And quality open space and the recreational opportunities it provides and the attendant economic benefits that go with those has been at our core since the beginning. Not only saving part of the Dells, but the regional park idea, and we were so excited about the intergovernmental agreement between Prescott, Prescott Valley, and the county that will further that goal. And I'm so pleased that Joe has been continuing to work with our great partners, the Prescott National Forest, towards exactly the same goal. This is quality open space, and it's going to help us a lot. Thank you. Oh, and I'm also a member of the city's General Plan Review Committee, and I think that maybe we can get something in that plan about this kind of intergovernmental cooperation. I hope so. Thank you.
My name's Tom Rusing, and I'm speaking partly on behalf of Save the Dells, but equally as a long-term resident. And to say that we at Save the Dells and me personally are really excited about this project, we applaud the agreement between the different governmental agencies, and it's an example of how that can occur for the good of the entire region. And that's exactly what we at Save the Dells is one of our goals and mission. And I want to specifically thank the council for being willing to do a significant in-kind donation to this project, and the Joe Baines for taking the lead in this. It's what I feel is also an example of electing the right people to counsel, that listen to the people and share their vision and try to make these kind of projects a reality. And finally, I think it's a really important example of citizen involvement, and Save the Dells is an example of that, but many other entities in terms of trails and mountain biking, including PIMBA, the local Prescott Mountain Bike Association, and the things that they're doing in cooperation with the Forest Service and Prescott. So I think there's many reasons to applaud this kind of action, and we would like to thank you for all your efforts. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor Protem.
Well, Joe, I'll just say, echoing Katie's comments from the beginning, it's great to see this cooperation between various levels of government and on a regional level, and keep up the good work. Thank you for all you guys are doing, and the Forest Service as well. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I move to approve City Contract Number 2024-095. Second.
A motion and a second.
Passes 4-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. I guess that's the end of our meeting today. Unusually short, so...
Record-breaking.
Yeah. The mayor tends to read a quote from founding fathers. I'm going to mix it up a little bit with one of my favorite historical leaders, which is Abraham Lincoln, who said, "Those who deny freedom to others deserve it not for themselves." Thank you, everyone.